This conference will now be recorded.
We will open this special meeting of the selectmen. Time being 5:00 o'clock, we will open it with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we were asked by our staff, employees, they had some concerns about the moving and what's going on downstairs as far as the demolition and reconstruction of our ceiling down at Town Hall. So we will open it up to the employees, please speak into the microphone. Your concerns, we'll write them down.
Hi.
Yep. Say your name for the record so that we can have it on.
Becky Albert, Deputy Town Clerk Tax Collector. When we met this afternoon with the demolition team, they talked about which door we were going to have open to the public or whether the public was expected to come in this door here. And they were going to block that one off. I can't remember exactly what was discussed, but I just want that entryway to be looked at as, you know, it's dirty, it's messy. The door seems to not open that easily from, you know, from the outside, just thinking about those things about what the public is going to encounter coming in, going up the stairs. You know, how that's going to work. And then I think Kim and I have questions about more of that, like if we have to go downstairs to serve somebody because they can't come up the stairs, how are we going to manage that and where? Thank you.
Okay, I have that written down. So as a board, we're going to discuss all of this because these are points that you're making up that some of them we've brought up before, but some of them are new and we haven't decided on some of what you're saying, for instance, the which door you're going out on and which public is coming in on. We haven't fully decided on that. And I agree with you, it is messy, that's not a problem to clean up. Thank you, Becky. All right, Janice, take the mic.
Just to add on to what Becky said, there's also only one handrail on one of the staircases going downstairs, so in that back hallway. So if that could be looked at, so if somebody is coming up the stairs or going down on the opposite side, they're not just having to pause because it's going to be a lot for some people.
Okay. Johanna.
I have written up from the land use coordinator, Leanne, and she had spoken with her employee, the code enforcement, and this is what it says. Their concerns are the life safety issues, the building structure. In consultation with the building inspector, the following recommendation is made. A review of the existing second floor dead live load by a structural engineer to be done prior to adding any additional weight, including filing cabinets, desks, furniture, copy machines, staff, and other accessories. This suggestion is meant to avoid overloading the second floor and creating a potential safety issue. Traffic and parking. With dumpsters located on School Street, the sidewalk will be non-accessible. Accessing the building from the Main Street will require walking on the roadway. Crossing from east to west on School Street will be compromised by line of sight due to the obstruction of the dumpsters. Currently, School Street is extremely dangerous with traffic speeding down the hill as well as taking the corner at unsafe speeds. Code issues. ADA compliance. The elevator will be unavailable to the public as well as staff during construction. ADA standards must be applied equally to the public as well as employees. Currently, we have one or more staff members who meet the criteria for a walking disability as defined by the state of New Hampshire. It is an unrealistic expectation for an employee with mobility issues to navigate the stairs to meet the needs of the public. Bathrooms and hot water. The second floor has one toilet and one sink which does not have hot water. These facilities, which do not meet the New Hampshire Building Code, although utilized by some employees, should at no time be open to the public. General concerns. Noise interference, phone usage increasing from four to seven lines in an open area, construction noise from outside and below, increasing staff from four to seven with additional public traffic and interaction with an open office area with no sound barriers. The common area is frequently used by land use and sewer to meet with residents, developers, and contractors to review full-size plans which require adequate space. I will leave you guys with a copy of what Leanne has drafted up.
Appreciate that.
And I feel like you guys have heard my concerns the other night.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Gail Bestick, Administrative Assistant.
Have to talk into the mic, please.
Gail Bestick, Administrative Assistant. I mirror quite a lot of what Leanne said. The structural concerns with the extra weight, safety of the residents entering and exiting School Street doors, again with the dumpsters on the sidewalk, that's going to create more of a dangerous corner. The disruption of the land use department and sewer department with three other departments up here. The noise during the demolition and construction and the exposure. She mentioned the four telephone lines. Now we'll have seven different phones ringing in the conversations. I'm just not real comfortable with this decision moving upstairs.
Hey, thank you. Board? Oh, Janice, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry, Janice, I apologize.
No worries. Janice Delacros, Land Use Technician. I just have a few other things that I jotted down from the video from the other night and specifically, let me just see, well, I was thinking about the weight of the, what the floor can hold, but specifically when they moved the filing cabinets the last time from downstairs to upstairs, the situation when the DPW was moving them on the elevator, I said, gee, I'm surprised you even got those on the elevator. And the answer was, are you kidding me? You should have seen this thing, Boeing. We were even afraid of how it was Boeing on that elevator. So right there, I say, can we really safely maneuver anything new upstairs? Those filing cabinets are quite heavy. And I remember that comment from them that day, and it was really very disturbing because I'm saying, yeah, well, maybe it didn't break that time, but maybe the next time I take up a bottle of water, maybe it will. So I just, I have a concern whether the elevator can handle any of the weight that actually has to come upstairs as well. Then I have, I guess there's, it seems a little bit of a change in plans, maybe, or maybe not, I'm not sure, I'm a little confused, on the egress from the second floor, whether it would be from that area or this area, it's still a little confusing to me at this point. So maybe it just hasn't been decided on, so I guess I'll just wait until a decision is made. Also, well, a couple of the things were on Leanne's list, so I'm sort of just trying to pass through here. A lot of what, I mentioned this earlier today, but a lot of what I read and hear is the lead content for children is a greater concern. It's a concern for all, but it's a greater concern naturally on a smaller person. And my concern is, is during this construction, are we going to have parents with their kids because it is summer school vacation and they'll be touting them along with them, running around upstairs, you know, going through doors, maybe falling down a flight of stairs? I mean, I don't know, you know, that might be a little bit dramatic and a little presumptuous, but certainly a concern that in as close quarters like we will, what is being proposed, it could cause other problems as well. That's, and the concern for the lead for children, that was the other concern I have. Has it been considered maybe to impose an age limit on what can come, who can come into the building? You know, just as, bad analogy, but just as we're saying no pets now, we might want to say something about children under a certain age, only for their own safety. I just have a concern, you know, beyond the staff and with what the outcomes might be down the line, or what somebody might think now their outcomes are because of this situation. Only other thing that came to mind, and it was using these stairs, but I guess it would be using either set of stairs, is has this, I brought this up several times in the past about having an AED somewhere in the building, and at this point, I'm specifically saying on the second floor. I can't tell you how many times, watch the videos, people will be huffing and puffing, coming up those stairs. I'm waiting at the top of them, top of the steps for them to come up, and they just say, I just have to wait a minute. You know, at that point, I always say, well, just sit down for a few minutes, I'm in no hurry. But it is a concern. Those stairs are very, very difficult for the type of customers that now are going to be coming up those stairs. It's not just going to be the contractors, it's going to be a lot of people that are coming in to register their cars and their pets or whatever else, and they're used to just going to the first floor. I think that's a major concern, and we should at least have some kind of precautionary measures in place for that. And I think that's, I think that's about it that comes to mind quickly. I'm sorry, not better prepared, but it was a quick notice.
I appreciate it, some good points there. Anyone else? Kim? We're going to wait for everyone to talk.
Okay, well, I have to leave. I was just going to tell them.
Okay, hold on a minute.
What you said, and
All right, so you're not going to get
I'm not sure what the answer to this is, but we'll be working on it for sure. You raised some extremely valid points.
Thanks, Joe. Joe has to go to another meeting, so appreciate it, Joe. All right, Kim, go ahead.
All right, some of these are going to depend on decisions that are made after tonight. What Becky and I have been looking at so far is setting up a protocol, not unlike when it was COVID, and I think you guys mentioned that, about ways to manage payment, ways to manage people who are unable to do the stairs. Like COVID, we would encourage mailing in and online renewals upstairs, we'd accept any type of payment downstairs. If we meet someone at the card, we will not be able to accept credit cards, and I'd really like to not accept cash if that's possible. You know, people may break the rules, but just managing our time and going upstairs and downstairs, a lot of this depends on where our records are being kept and a lot of our files, because we use a lot of stuff every day and we will have extra trips getting access to what we need to use. We have, we have questions, and it's probably too early to know, about what type of workstation we'd even have. Right now, we have desks and we have a countertop. Are we going from that to just a desktop doing everything for everybody? Will there be a counter? And these, some of this stuff, I know, will depend on where we end up. Other than that, let me just, I think, Becky, what am I forgetting? We've started hashing this out, but it's going to end up, where we're going to end up and where our files are going to end up and all that stuff as to how we tackle these specifics.
Excuse me, Becky, this is Becky, about the counter, you know, we, people have to sign a lot of documents. I mean, if they do a title of car, they're going to sign three titles, three title applications, they're going to sign three copies of the registration, they might have to write out their check. That's very difficult, just to keep in mind that if they're doing it at a desk level, you know, counter level is much easier to do that unless they have a chair to sit in, exactly. And I do want to add that lots of people bring their children in with them when they're coming in to register, of all ages, you know, and if they've got a kid in a stroller, can we really say, no, you can't come in, go bring your child, you can't go bring your child home and leave it alone or leave it in the car. It's just something to think about. I think, I think that's it for me.
Gail has
If we have an emergency operations center and we have the capability of DIT, phones, offices available, why was the PD taken off the table? And why is it, why are we thinking about moving up here?
I think the chief made a very good presentation to the board on why he was, would prefer not to have it up there. There was legalities around that, as well as logistics, other logistics. We certainly can't have a juvenile in the hallway while somebody's trying to register their vehicle. It's illegal for anyone to see that juvenile. So there's a lot of other things mixed in with that, which the chief gave a very good presentation to us.
I would also maybe caution the board that there are legalities and issues with what you're looking to do up here, safety-wise and ADA-wise and that, that sort of thing. And I think that there are definite safety concerns with the weight-bearing load on this floor. And there was a very public building collapse very recently, and I would just really caution the board, you have employees that are very afraid.
Go ahead, Janice.
I'm sorry for the choppiness of what I have to say. During the meeting, the video meeting that you had last week on Thursday night, I think it was Thursday night, the concern came to pick up two parking spaces and you said, I assumed, or I interpreted it to say that it was the two parking spaces on the other side of School Street. And I'm curious why it was those two spaces where they have to cross School Street, which we all know is not a safe crosswalk to begin with, instead of two spaces going, coming from this direction, so coming down East Main Street next to
Those are ours anyway, those are open to us, though we own those. They are available to us.
Those two, but I'm talking about another two.
We don't own them. You mean further up from Onions?
Just, yeah, the next two. There's like even a handicap ramp.
We own two
Right.
diagonal ones, and then Onions owns six diagonal ones. So it would be after that. So it would be the apartment beyond that, beyond Mechanic Street, where we would pick up the other town-owned ones.
And there isn't any way to maybe, possibly, and just throwing it out
Oh, there's a
To negotiate with him to take two on the far end instead of two on this end during time, during the construction time? I mean, I'm just throwing it out there, only because of the safety with those two parking spaces, using those two versus the different two. I mean, I just envisioned somebody trying to get across that crosswalk at a snail's pace and having people looking at a dumpster or some kind of construction and being distracted as well.
Anyone else want to say anything? Tim, Jeannie, want to add to that? Board? Want to take into consideration what the staff has said. We need to talk about it a little bit later anyway, because we have new information that Jeannie and Tim are going to give to us. So, and there are decisions to be made, that we haven't made decisions on, so.
I'm not sure why it's confused which entryway we would use when Eric left Thursday. I mean, we had specifically asked him if he could do the construction in the front first, even if we had to close Town Hall for a couple of days, so we would have access to the front stairs. He said he would look, he came back and said, it's a hard ceiling, no problem. So this really only becomes an egress. If we need to evacuate Town Hall, for whatever reason, fire, that's an egress. Ingress and egress is the front.
Jeannie, go ahead.
So what he didn't know, I don't think, is that those two doors open out. If you have ever tried to come up those steps, they're very steep. I think, Pat, you saw that today. So in terms of safety for people coming in and out, especially elderly, and I think Kim and Becky could address it as well, there's not good handrail opportunity for them. The steps are very steep, and then as you get up to the top step, the door opens out onto the top step. So doesn't, while, while it is available, it doesn't look like it's the best way to have people come in to the building, maybe as a means of egress. But after looking at it today, and he was here today again, and we all looked at it, we felt like probably this, this side here was the best side.
But I agree, it's not the best thing because of the dumpsters, the construction taking place, but also why a corridor could be made to use the other set of front doors. Again, we closed Town Hall for two days, they do their work in this front, it's done, we build a plastic hallway just to the other door.
The vestibule.
Right, but he, and Tim, you were there, I don't think he was ever talking, he was talking about the door, that you could block that door off coming into the two doors that people typically come into, the Town Clerk Tax Collectors, that is not what he was talking about, correct? Am I
I don't think it's probably been presented to him of what I just said. At all.
I think Catherine is asking, is that a viable proposal to him, to see if he, if that could happen and we could use the same front doors coming in that we use all the time, and then block that off and go through the doors upstairs? If we could ask him. Johanna has a question.
During that meeting, when they were discussing the entryways, when he was talking about blocking the bottom doorway at the bottom of the stairs, he was talking about closing it off with wood and then sheeting. So I think that you need a little bit more than just plastic sheeting if you're looking to really secure it from the dust.
Whatever it takes.
And I think that's what she was referring to, whatever it takes, we do have someone proficient in that to block it off, but it might be a viable solution to that. But this was meant only for egress, but it might be an easier way, but anybody else? Did you hear any of them? Nobody?
I'm not concerned with the weight limit on this floor. This building was designed, the second floor was designed as a meeting place. This, they had theater productions up here, they had, Tilton Rec Center was up here, they had square dances up here. This floor was designed to carry weight, it was designed to carry a lot of people. I'm not concerned about the weight. And we're not, we shouldn't be bringing every single file cabinet up here. We should only be bringing what we absolutely need. This is only going to take, you know, two to two and a half weeks, let's say three weeks, to get through that part of the construction, the worst part. And the rest is rebuild. So we don't need to bring every single thing up here, just what we absolutely need.
So does that mean the other half of the rebuild is what, Kim?
Right, the other half, I want to bring as little wherever I'm going as possible as well. We deal with a lot, which is a total pain, trying to put this together. Are you telling me that we're dealing with maybe two or three weeks of having access, not having access, and the rest of the time, we'd have access to stuff we didn't bring up?
No.
Or are we still looking at seven to eight weeks or so?
We're still looking to about seven to eight weeks, because the first couple of weeks, they're going to be demolition and cleaning up everything. And then we will have someone come in and put the ceiling back up, and then we'll have the electrician do the lighting. And then at that point, we're having all of the offices repainted, so that when you go back, you're having a nice, fresh office.
Thank you.
And then the furniture comes back in. So am I right in that timeline? So looking at that timeline, you're looking at about, to cover all of that, you're looking at about seven weeks.
Yeah, so we need to look at about two months' worth of motor vehicle business, vitals, taxes, everything.
Right.
Which is fairly encompassing, but I just, that helps me, helps us decide what goes where and how.
Right.
We'll work with you, we will, but it's just having it work for us, which is what we need.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Thanks, Catherine.
But we will, the board definitely will be discussing it a little bit later, because I know they have not heard from Tim and Jeannie on what they found out the last few days. So it's not fair to just blurt out and say, oh, we're going to do this. They need the information from Tim and Jeannie as well. But we will take it, we take your concerns, by the way. Janice, that AED should have been in here a long time ago. I agree with you. We got it with the grant, but the senior center, the AED, and then the fire department came in and gave us all certification training on it that was working at the, at the senior center. I know we don't have access to the Town Hall, but you can have access to the senior center to have, at any time, to have that training up there, or at the ELC, one or the other. But it is a wise decision, even if we weren't doing what we're doing, to have an AED on each floor. That should take place, no matter what.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
And this is a loaded one, and you probably can't answer it, but being neurotic and liking timelines, I just stopped it. Not too stressed about this. No, it's not fair to ask, you're not going to be able to tell me when we're really going to be able to begin, so I can start setting my goals out as far as packing and reorganizing. It's probably a bit too early to ask any sort of timeline. Is there anything out there?
We have, we do have a tentative timeline, Kim. So thanks to Gail, who's done a lot of work on this. We do have, it looks like a tentative date for a move, moving of the furniture would be the 16th and the 17th, a Friday and a Saturday. Any furniture that is going to be moved up would be moved up, any furniture that would be moved out would be put in my boxes and stored. We did have a discussion earlier today about perhaps maybe moving all the file cabinets into one my box and putting it, I don't know, it's a DPW or, oh, actually, yeah, in front, so that there was access to the file cabinets while the work was being done. Payrolls on June 19th, the next day, the electricity, Josh would come in and turn the electricity off. Backup on the 17th, Tim has arranged for the
Not final yet.
Not final, but tentatively the, the IT equipment. We met with Chris Pryor today, Pat and Tim and I, and they, he gave us a general outline, June 21st, 22nd, 23rd, they would do the containment of the first floor, which is wrapping everything in plastic, June 26th, the week of June 26th is when they would start the work full-on. July, the week of July 3rd is the holiday, so they'll miss two days, the 3rd and the 4th, so that'll be like a half week they'll work. July 10th, they'll work the week of July, the week of July 17th. If everything goes as planned, and one of the questions the staff asked Chris today was, what, what would be a possible delay? You know, if you anticipate finding anything up in the ceiling, and basically, they said they didn't think they were going to find anything. And basically, they said they didn't think they were going to find anything that would delay them unless it was asbestos. And the testing so far doesn't look like there is asbestos. So the week of July 17th, they would finish up. And we could, if we could coordinate with the ceiling people, which we've got one quote from John Pratt, John Pratt Company. Gail did get another gentleman to come in today to give us a quote, and he looked at it and he said, no, don't want to do this. And so I think we're trying to find one more. So the week of July 24th, he would finish the ceiling. He said it'd take about a week to do the ceiling with a potential of, if everything goes well, with the potential of moving back on July 31st. So back to the beginning, Kim, I would suggest that, however, whatever the board decides tonight, that you start tagging what you need and what can be stored.
I think one of the questions that I have for the board later is, should we close Town Hall Thursday and Friday, the 15th and 16th, so that our employees can pack up? Because we're not going to be able to do any real work out there with people coming in. So that's going to be a question to the board. But you're expected to come in and just pack up what you can because on the 16th, they'll be moving it out. Any other thoughts, questions? I'm looking at some of the things, most of which we have to address, so.
I think one of them was, Jess was mentioning about the lead in children. One of the things with the lead that's in there, it's flaking paint that's on the metal tiles. And they're going to be taking those out, so it's not like sanded stuff. And they also have a negative pressure. So everything is sucking into the room and can't go out. That's, that's the way it's done. So as for lead exposure, it's virtually impossible for it to happen. It's all contained. So that's Big Ten. And he probably addressed it when he came in.
I guess I was just thinking, a little bit more forward-thinking, which is, you know, because a lot of people might take it, or could possibly, or maybe, take advantage of a situation and say, you know, six months from now, well, my son was with me when I went and paid my taxes, and now he's tested positive for lead. And, you know, there could be some, I, I want to say, if we could avoid those types of situations, I think it might be beneficial. And just thinking about years ago, when all of the children that did suffer some developmental type issues, you know, I think it's, it is a concern. That's all, for me anyhow.
And so like I said, it's a negative air situation. So there's, unless you went inside their barrier, you would not be in any way exposed to any type of lead on it. And it, the, the main thing that's gone is removing of plaster and lath. The tiles, the metal tiles that are on the top, those are the ones that have lead paint on them, which are actually collecting all of those, and they're going to recycle them. They'll be reused, not here, but that's it, you know, and they're handled in that. And then it's, the issue is if people ingest the paint or sanding or the dust from it. So that's all negative pressure and taken out.
Let me ask just one sort of follow-up question to that. And that is, my understanding, plaster is very strong and would last a long time. What caused the collapse?
So I, if, I don't know if anybody else here has had a home that has lath and plaster on it or worked in the house. I think most of our homes are lath and plaster. Some years ago, the walls were rearranged and rebuilt with the walls that just go up partially and suspended ceiling to re-divide up the Town Hall. In the process of that, some stuff was demoding improperly. The other thing is ceiling lights and things like that weren't attached actually into the beams. They were attached to the lath and the metal. And what happened is, over time, it pulled those away from the beams, the lath and the plaster with the metal. And that, that's what jarred everything loose. The presently, the, the worst is, and I think you've probably seen it through the window in Gail's office, you can look through the window and take a look in that, that section. And I think that just, we discussed as Board of Selectmen, that, yeah, maybe we could take just the part that's loose. But now, it would be the best opportunity because they're going to have all the equipment to make the negative air and everything, to take care of all of it downstairs. Get all of that out of there, clear it out, have it all done properly. Those walls, everything has been painted for a long time or all that. Have a fresh paint put on it, have, you know, new ceiling tiles and just be done with it. Have the wires organized, put in better lighting. I mean, you probably see the difference in lighting up here and what's down there. Save energy on the lighting, get it all done. And it's, it's tough. There's no good way to get it done without some types of inconveniences. And it's, I wouldn't want it going on my home, but I, I'd have to move into my garage or upstairs or.
And I assume those are safe places for you to move into. That's where the concern is. We just want to make sure that the places where we're working, whether it's downstairs or upstairs, are safe and continue to be safe.
Yeah.
That, that's really it. It's, I don't think it's anything, you know, we know there's inconveniences. And I think everybody has, you know, at least in the past, has tried to work with each other and, and managed to get through things. My question, going back to my original question on this, what caused that collapse? So they're doing the entire downstairs?
Yes.
They'll be doing the entire downstairs, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because I was going to say, what would prevent that from happening, you know, 10 feet away? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the entire downstairs. And it's not a structural issue. Nothing that they're doing is structural. Because we're removing lath and plaster. We're not removing any beams or any floor. It's all cosmetic ceiling.
Sorry. How do we know once they get up there, they're not structural engineers? But they may get up there.
They're, they're not touching any of those. So only be moving, just as if you had sheet rock on your studs on your wall, and you remove the sheet rock and put fresh sheet rock up. It's only the facade and that surface stuff, just like paneling or anything else. In old days.
So you don't feel the need to have a structural engineer come in and check it out?
They're not touching any of the structure, yeah. And that's very explicit that.
The floor is the ceiling, and the ceiling is the floor. If they get in there and start pulling things down.
Well, see, the floor is not the ceiling.
Is going to compromise the floor.
The floor is not, so you have this layer, which would be the lath and the plaster. You have this, which is the metal with the lead on it. And then up here, you have beams that are going. And then above that is the floor here. So they're taking out the metal first that has the lead. And that's the part that has the lead issue, okay? They're taking all of that out, which has flaking paint on it and stuff and soot. Those they're taking out, they're actually recycling them. They're going to a place, they're going to recycle all that metal. Then they've got the lath and plaster, which some pieces might fall down when they're pulling this off. And this, all this stuff with all the little slats and the dusty stuff, if you've ever had, your houses, I think that age, you know how if you put a picture in and you take a chunk out? All that's coming off. But all these beams aren't getting touched. Those aren't moving at all. It's just the cosmic, cosmetic layer that's coming out. That's the dusty part. That's, that's, and they're going to take out in sections. When I, I asked them specifically, you know, you just start ripping, you know, they're going to be cutting sections out and it, just pulling it away from the stud. So nothing is touching the floor or the structural beams. We're checked into that one, the procedure and what they're doing.
To that point, to the structural point, I think that this, in, in my view, you know, ever since we moved this stuff upstairs, I always felt as though that, you know, can this floor really handle the weight of those filing cabinets? And, you know, a few general public, because the meetings don't generate a lot of people. But I was always concerned where those were. The recent news, I'm sure heightens everybody's concern, of course. Take a look at how those buildings have collapsed. They don't just collapse one little room. If that's the case for Jeannie's and Gail's office, well, we were, we were blessed because it could be more drastic. And I guess when you look at, I've watched many implosions and how those, they collapse those buildings deliberately and how they collapse, that's my other part of the concern, is what if they dismember something in the walls? And I know that they're very skilled people. It's, it's very obvious, they have the dangerous job and they know it. But still, they're dealing with the, again, they're dealing with a building that's over 100 years old, closer to 150, I think. And a lot of things are different. You know, to Catherine's point, this built, this was built for recreation. It was built for large groups of people so they could watch a, a play of some sort. I agree. Over the years, things disintegrate and they become less healthy. Sort of like our bones, I guess. This is their bones, the building's bones. And it, it can deteriorate and it can't hold the same strength. That's why we break a hip or we collapse, we need a knee replacement or whatever the situation. So I guess if it is at all possible for the board to, I want to say, at least put people's mind at ease and consider. I, I know that there's a cost to everything, and this is a big cost that has to be addressed, you know, with the downstairs. But if they could just find a few extra dollars to employ a structural engineer to put a lot of people's minds at ease, I think it would go a long way.
The other thing to keep in mind is that the lath and the plaster is really heavy, very heavy. A small section of that's going to the weight, saves one person. They're removing all of that weight off of, that's on this floor and that structure. And if you've ever been up in there and looked at the way this building is built, it's incredible. It's eye beams. You've never seen anything like it. We've been having, you know, keeping track of the bricks and the mortar. We had one wall, because it was leaking a bit a few years ago, that we had all the masons come in and redo it. And it's in, this building's in good shape. I've been, have you ever been up in like Ashland Town Hall or something and seen some of those?
I have faith in our ancestors and the way they built, but I'm, still have my concerns as well.
Okay, go ahead, Kim.
With, we're going to have all new lighting downstairs? I'm, I'm being very selfish here. Stop it, John. We have two ceiling fans, and one is noisy, but at least it gets it really cool. The one over my desk is not very good. Our office in the summer is just brute, in the winter, we sometimes wear summer clothes if it's sunny because of the solar heating. Will we be, I hope we don't lose fans. Maybe we could get more Granger Supply-type, heavy-duty fans? I don't know. But we have a heat problem in our office, and I hope we don't lose that in the reconstruction. Just a thought.
Good point. We'll consider that. Anyone else, anything? Go ahead, Scott.
So, all right, obviously, the, obviously, the doors, there's going to be postings for the fact that there'll be lead abatement taking place on the windows. So would we, would we be within our rights and our parameters of putting, putting a warning out to address the concerns that our employees have about young children coming in? And just making the suggestion that, for the time during the lead abatement, it would probably be best that you didn't bring young children into the building? Or does that set us up for?
I think that sets us up because there is no, we've been told over and over again, there is no danger. There is no danger. We certainly need to let the public know what we're doing and why. But to specifically say, don't bring your children in, there just isn't any danger. They're going to have more exposure to lead dust opening and closing these windows.
Sure, absolutely.
Than the project that's going to take place downstairs.
Looking around the room. So we will continue to talk about this later on for a few minutes before we head out for the evening. Thank you for all your comments. We appreciate them. We take, we don't take it lightly, that's for sure. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. And we can talk about this in a minute. We have a non-public, two items.
You're going into non-public?
Yes.
Yep, brief.
Brief, non-public, and then I'll invite you back up, Tim. Janice, if you go downstairs. Chief, you're going to hang out downstairs? I'll text you.
Oh, you got it? You have it? Go ahead.
I, I got you.
You're on.
The time being, 5:46, I make a motion to move into non-public session, per RSA 91A, colon, 3, 2. Dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee or disciplining of such employee or investigation of any charges against him or her, unless the employee affected, has the right to public meeting. And two, request that the meeting be open, in which case, the request shall be granted. And the other one is a public safety. I don't know what the RSA one is, but we can look it up. It's RSA and Public Safety, the police department. That's the other non-public that we're dealing with. So do I have a second?
Second.
Rule call vote?
Ruggles, yes.
Scanlon, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Constantino, yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
I'm going to make a motion to seal the minutes, the non-public session permanently.
Yep. You going to do it?
I just did, make a motion.
All right, I'll second that. A motion is made and seconded to seal the minutes of the non-public permanently. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So my question is, and this hasn't, I haven't heard this. Is every stick of furniture file cabinet coming out of Town Hall?
Yes.
Downstairs.
What are we doing with the two safes?
They can't.
They can't, they're not coming out of Town Hall.
They'll be.
They'll be covered. They'll be covered.
Okay.
So.
So you're getting two MyBoxes?
Probably a 20-foot and a 16-foot.
That's what they recommended.
So we'll be putting filing cabinets in one where they're accessible?
We, that was one of the thoughts, to put the filing cabinets because we need supervisor to checklist. We need, Gail has four, our administrative assistants has four, town clerk task collector has quite a bit to put out in the parallel spot there so that they can access them. The other option would be to, Heather's office, move her desk into the cubby and then put what Kim needs as file cabinets there. I measured today, and all of what she needs, including the file that has the decals in plates, going in there, in that office. All we have to do is move Heather's desk, and she has two file cabinets that won't be touched, they'll just be moved to the side. And then all of Kim's files could fit in there. And then she can have access and just bring up, like, a certain amount for a supply. And then if they're kind of getting low, they go back downstairs to get a little bit more for the DMV things. So, and it's locked, the door's locked, and the file, that file with all of the DMV decals can be moved right into that door without having to go into MyBox or come upstairs.
Perfect.
And that alleviates anybody having. And that alleviates anybody having to come up, any file cabinets coming up at all.
Could the supervisors of the checklist files be moved to Public Works?
That would be the only one that we would need.
And that probably would be a question for the supervisors.
They do need access to them. I asked that question today.
You did. So could they be moved to Public Works?
They just need access to them. Sure that they could have access to if they're at Public Works. But the other issue would be, then Gail, I think we could fit them in. We'd have to measure again. I'm pretty sure that Gail, the personnel files definitely will fit in there. And then there's two laterals that I'm pretty sure will fit in there along with Kim's.
Why don't we just take Heather's desk out?
Well, it's not going to affect anything because it's in that cubby hole way in the back.
It's underneath cubby, okay. Under the stairs.
Right, under the stairs. So we could, if need be, the two small lateral files, we could probably bring up here. What do you think? We're talking about files. And that way, that would eliminate the need for My Box out front.
Too small?
So moving all of Kim's files that she needs into Heather's office and the personnel files go into where the Kim's office is so it's lockable, I mean Heather's office, so it's lockable. And then what would be left would be the supervisors of the checklist files, trustee of the trust fund, and the two laterals that were in Gail's office.
Yeah, so my thinking was that you could have the laterals on one side and the deeper ones on the other side. You just couldn't pull both drawers out at the same time, as long as there's enough room to get in between them.
But lengthwise, if you only have eight feet and they're 36 inches, so only two laterals can fit in that spot where we were talking, on one side. And then two more could, we have five feet, six inches on the other, in front of the heater.
But in front of the window also, there was room for one.
Depending on how.
Right.
How deep it is. If it's a lateral, yes. But if it's a file, no.
I think one of those laterals in Gail's office, that has all the contracts and bond paperwork, things like that, that one would have to be in there. The other one, one drawer could be stored elsewhere. It has various supplies in it. But I don't recall what was in the top of that, that second cabinet drawer, do you? The two black laterals, the second black lateral closest to your office, the bottom drawer had tools and measuring tape, batteries, that sort of thing.
It's got contracts and.
In the top shelf, the top. So it's possible something could be maybe combined or some boxes put on top of the lateral that contain the top drawer of the other.
And then that would eliminate the need for My Box. Then to address, are we good with that or you want to talk more about that? Do we want to try to get them into Heather's office and?
I'd like them being in this building, the My Box in this kind of.
Yep.
Having going up to a storage box.
Go ahead.
I have a question. When I was downstairs, I was thinking about the exterior, the entrance and all that sort of stuff and wondering if we were willing to put boxes out front, what if we had them put the containers out front and left School Street side for parking and then people wouldn't have to jog around and cross the street and come back around? And you wouldn't have the danger of, you know, if anyone's ever been out there when someone's like been flying through either across from Northfield or turning the corner, sometimes you, you know, it is a little dicey there. And sometimes the width out here isn't great. So I was just thinking that never.
The dumpster, you mean?
The dumpsters in front of the building as opposed to on the side. They wouldn't be able to rope that off, but.
I think it'd be an impediment to the business next door. You're going to have all that activity of them.
It could be. It was just something I was thinking about considering, you know, where people would be coming in, the primary entrance.
Fortunately, the dumpster won't be there for a long time after they get the stuff out.
So we want to keep the dumpster on School Street?
I would.
Anyone else?
Pull it up as far as they can to the telephone pole. They have to keep in mind that a garbage truck backs down that alleyway. Do they back down now or do they drive in?
They drive in.
They drive in and back out.
Right, drive in and back out. Okay, we want to address, so the back stairs, I mean, obviously, we could clean that up. That's not a problem. I mean, it is dirty. We can ask the cleaner to, when she comes in, to just mop it up a little bit, clean it up, back stairs, the hallway.
It should be cleaned up, but it should only be used as an egress, not an ingress.
Well.
You're balancing on those steps. I mean, I go out that way, but when you go out the door, you're balancing on this little narrow step. The door doesn't shut. You have to be very careful when you shut that door to make sure that it actually latches.
I think they fixed that.
No.
So the front step, we can ask the front door, where in front of the welfare director's office, we can ask Kevin if he can look at that and maybe it can, you know, sand it on the bottom or something, it'd be easier to open.
Well, the problem is, Jeannie brought up, is that it opens out and there's no landing. So in order for you to get, open up the door, you have to.
Step on.
And then step down.
Oh yeah, that's right. We were going to ask him to do the.
Tunnel.
Do that tunnel first and then see if he could do that. And then they could come into the front door and then go over there.
They can build us a tunnel.
I mean, the only other option would be is to leave those doors open because there's a door at the bottom of the staircase and put Town Hall.
And if they do that, then if they were, if they were successful to do that, then Kim could meet somebody that needed to be in the little glassed-in enclosure there. That would be ideal. All right. Okay with that? No? No?
I'll ask him.
You were shaking your head so I didn't really, you were talking about.
We were just trying to figure out what, how that would work. So I'll ask.
So when you go through the metal, you know, the glass doors, directly over to the welfare office, directly over, just building a tunnel and then taking those tiles out first. Starting there first so that that's all boarded up.
You have the contract or Jeannie's going to hand you the contract. I don't know if they would do that for the same money.
Well, they don't have to build us a tunnel. Kevin can build the tunnel.
So.
He wasn't going to plastic off the entryway anyway.
We ask them and we'll proceed from there. Maybe we might have to use the back door or we, you know.
All right, so let's continue on to some of these issues and see if we can't take some of these issues out. It, one handrail to the back stairs, perhaps maybe we can get Kevin to just put another handrail? That's.
You need to have two?
Pretty easy to do. We should have two anyway.
Idea for the future because it is an egress.
Right, it is an egress. We should have two, too. So maybe we could get Kevin to do that.
She said elevator weight, that was not an issue. They're not going to overload. We know what the weight is.
Yep.
Lead for children.
Yep.
No, I don't see any.
That's not an issue.
Issue.
So the furniture.
AED.
Yep, the AED, we really need to look into that and we could probably put Gail on that and make sure that that gets done. I mean, there are grants out there, too. I know we got one for the grant. The fire department got them from, I think Homeland Security for us.
The other thing is to have training, CPR.
Yeah, where they come, it's the AED.
But immediately, at least get the training for CPR. And AEDs, you know, you still have to do CPR and all that. And you could go and you don't have to have the AED to keep somebody's heart going. You have to have the CPR and the cardio and especially we have the fire department right there. So we could do some CPR training. It's good for everybody. I think we did a few years ago.
Yep.
And anybody from boards or committees.
So safety of furniture being moved up to the second floor. We have, we've got to figure out what we're going to do as far as the town clerk, tax collector. Are we going to put them on this table? You know, what are we going to do?
So listening to them tonight, you know, first of all, from, I mean, this table could be used if it's positioned in such a way that, you know, it gives them, you know, that area that's more secure. But I would recommend having the cash registers behind the table. They don't need to be on the table. And for that matter, they're not connected to any of our systems. So they just need power and they could be along that back wall. The monitors and systems, the monitors would have to face them on, you know, their side of the table because the public's not allowed to see, you know, the other things. But otherwise, they could have chairs up at the table for people to sit down, fill out whatever they need to do, sign whatever they need to sign. And tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with a cabling company to get a quote on extending the fiber. They'll have to use a, well, it's complicated, but anyway, they'll have to extend the fiber up to the second floor. And I believe that is going to be somewhere in the vicinity of that floor box right there. So if that's the case, the rack is going to need to be somewhere not too far away from that. And I'm going to have to figure out the lengths on that for this quote. And so that may dictate, you know, where they are because I want to make sure that the rack is behind them so that it is as secure as their cash registers are. That equipment can't be, you know, touched by the public or, you know, somebody pulls something by accident or trip into it or what have you. So I would think that, you know, I mean, they, if they were using their own desks, they could. I don't know if you recall, those who've been around longer, when Joyce had the desk that Kim has now, she actually used part of it as a counter. So when you went into her office, it was like a counter area. And so that desk has that capability, but, you know, I don't know if there's that much room for it or what the weight is of that or if this would be moved and that moved up along with another desk. The other question is, you know, would we need to have two stations for them, for counter stations or just one? And it seems like their preference is to have two, which is fine. It's just, you know, it just means that they're going to need enough space for those. And then, you know, we're dealing with cables and plugs and that sort of thing. And attached to the rack, my plan is to have a pseudo maple that will be for the cabling so that the cabling won't drag across the floors because anything plugged into the wall right now won't work and the outlets. So because, not power outlets, but data or phone outlets. So I can do some hub work, but you're still going to need to have a cable strewn across either the floor or up and over or something. And I was thinking, I could probably make a straight run to the wall for land use. Have two cables going over as long as I can handle the POE or the power over ethernet for the phones. And then, and data, and then going over to sewer and then here for the town clerk, tax collector. So, you know, there is going to be, there's going to be some odd-looking stuff incorporated with that. I did reach out to the school today to see if they had any partitions. I didn't hear back anything this afternoon. So find out if there's anything available during the summer that we could borrow. And, but otherwise, it may just mean positioning the table in such a way that, you know, it reaches the wall on one side and then you've got some other sort of, you know, a desk or something else.
We don't want it to reach the wall because we want them to have that little alley right there to egress.
Right, I'm thinking this wall here. So if the table went perpendicular to how it is now, you know, so that someone comes up and they're right in front of the town clerk, tax collector.
But what if they come up there?
Well, then they'd have to walk around, I imagine, depending upon where.
Layoff. Talk to Spinnaker because they're always moving dividers and they had a whole bunch of stuff.
Call Nickerson.
Franklin Savings had a whole bunch down in their basement.
Good idea.
And they're good neighbors for loaning stuff, that they might have those dividers. The other thing is, if there's a tall table like that, that would make a nice.
Yeah, that could. It could.
If we have Snee Shields or the COVID Shield still.
In our election equipment, we have the Plexiglas shields that the ballot clerks used.
Well, and they also have, you know, they have those, those are removable Plexiglas downstairs right now that they have in the openings. They're just, they just set.
That's what these are.
Yeah.
They're very tall.
Yep.
But you can't slide anything under it, though.
The ones downstairs, you can.
Just the one on Kim's side.
No, they both have.
Both of them.
Both have, yeah. Yep. They're pretty much the same.
Need extras, those there.
All right, so the, so you've got an arrangement for using this table. Is everyone okay with this table? If need be, okay? And that way, we don't have to take her, her desk can go right to the stored.
Have we prepared anything to send out to the public?
No, not yet. We're getting to that. So how are we going to make it easier for disruption of phone use and things like that? I mean, it's, other than petitions between each person. If everybody's on the phone at the same time, it's going to be noisy.
It will be.
Headphones?
With.
I don't know.
With dividers, I've worked in manufacturing places with engineers all on the phone discussion that and a lot of those barriers, they have to cut once they do absorb a lot of sound.
It does cut down it.
Hold.
Yeah.
You know, it can't be the best we can do.
If we can get them, that would be great.
Are you planning on having anyone work at Public Works, DPW?
So town clerk, tax collector up here. We have, well, Chuck in, I thought we said Chuck and Janice.
If they wanted to.
But Janice can't be without Leanne, though, right? Because she works directly with her.
And Avatar. So it's best that they would be where the servers are.
I thought we said Chuck would go over there.
It's better to have everybody in one place for the public. I mean, most people come to Town Hall to do business and do all their business. You know, we don't want them driving all over town.
Well, one of the thoughts that we had earlier today was that that with those offices occupied, the town clerk and deputy here, that the administrative assistant could potentially work down there. That'd be one. Or they had talked about having the building inspector down there or building inspector in sewer. That was discussed at one point. So there are options. I guess the, you know, the, of course, you know, if it's for the public, then yeah, I guess you're going to want everybody here, but it is still going to be noisy. And I think it's mainly because you've got this height here. And even with, I think even with, you know, and I do know that you're right. I mean, they do dead. I mean, they do deaden some, but, um, even when these phones are going out here and it gets, it gets, uh, noisy, the ringing, the ringing. And you can turn those down and you can select different ringers. So one person knows their ringer from another. But, um, the deputy and town clerk, uh, their phones ring often, uh, during the day. So, you know, it's just, just something to deal with.
I worked up here with no wall, but the building inspector and the, uh, actually became town planner. With no walls. It wasn't an issue. We just dealt with it. You don't talk loud when you're on the phone. You just talk on the phone.
So who do you want down at the, at, at the Public Works?
Administrative assistant.
Chuck and, and the administrative assistant?
Well, I think the building inspector is probably not a real issue because.
He's on the road anyway.
90% of the time his work is out there like I am. My work is out there.
Right.
I just need to be at a computer for.
So for the.
Johanna's, oh.
For the administrative assistant, um, I mean, the amount of time she spends doing minutes, working on minutes that, uh, I would think it might be more difficult up here than it is downstairs. But, um, but if she were to move to the Department of Public Works, one of the things is the, the console would have to stay in the, uh, attached to our fiber network. So the console would either have to be here or at the PD and the IT room. And the auto attendant that we have now, I'm sure we'll have a different message saying, you know, our building caught COVID and here's what you got to do now kind of thing. And, and, you know, the, whatever accommodations we're going to have as the announcement, but it'll still list all the extensions, what number to call, that sort of thing. And someone could leave a message for her, but she wouldn't have the console down there. So she wouldn't be able to answer the phone live. But that happens today where she's working on something or talking to someone and, and it goes through to voicemail. She gets the message and she calls him back. So I would have phones down there, but, uh, our phone company advised that considering the connection down there, it wouldn't be advisable to have the console down there.
We certainly want to talk to the Public Works Director before we send anyone down there. But he already offered.
Yeah, he offered.
He offered. We need to let him know that we are definitely thinking of.
Well, and also the welfare to let it know that we're moving things around in our office.
She can go to family center maybe.
Oh, she works out of family center now anyway. So, um, so Gail and, um, the building inspector will go down to town hall?
DPW. Public Works.
What's that?
Be no reason for him to. He's got a space up here.
But what about the administrative assistant?
You said she's going down there.
But, oh, I thought you were questioning me when I just was saying, trying to recap and say, okay. So he's going to stay up here and then just the administrative assistant will go down to the DPW. Got it? All right. When they start the work, uh, to pack up on the 16th and 17th, they'll be here to move things out. We need to probably have our, uh, people that are in the offices downstairs pack up things. So my guess, my only thought, my suggestion would be to close town hall on the 15th and 16th. And let, let the people that are work in town hall package up their belongings on the 15th and 16th, but not take in public.
Let's put the message board out there as soon as possible to let the public know.
Yes, so plan their registration.
Are you folks writing this down or am I writing it down? So the message board. Town hall closed. 15th and 16th. And then it will be closed on a day or two when they make that tunnel for us, correct?
Yeah, it will. And, you know, transferring the electrics and the computer stuff. What's that involve?
Well, so, uh, tomorrow I'm meeting with the fiber guy, as I mentioned. And as long as, uh, of course, what I'm told by everybody out there, they're all flat out for the next four to six weeks. They're going to make an exception for us. We've used them before at the old PD and try to get in here and accommodate us. Um, I'm trying to get our other folks to be in here the weekend of. But Monday morning, the 19th, um, it, it is too hazardous to move our equipment upstairs that weekend, I would say, unless we have payroll done for that week. Because otherwise if it, if we run into problems, uh, or there's a fiber issue and we need consolidated, uh, they, I wouldn't expect them to be as responsive as some of our smaller vendors, uh, even though I've sort of put them on notice what we need. Even at a heightened point when we were going through the PD implementation, uh, and it was urgent. We had to wait and wait and wait. And so I would just say that, uh, I'd prefer to get payroll done before we move the IT equipment up here. That buys us a week, uh, because otherwise people aren't going to be paid on Wednesday of that week. So as soon as payroll is done, we can shut it down, move it up and, um, and go from there. There's a rack that I mentioned before that we can bring over from the PD. And, um, and then that can have the pole strapped to it or attached nearby. That'll be the maypole for the connections.
So we would still have to shut down at some point either, uh.
So Monday, the 19th, Monday afternoon and evening, if I can get the availability, it's possible we could get the move done then possibly. I mean, it's just not known whether we get it completed by the end of the evening. But, uh, and it's going to depend on the fiber.
When, when does Envirovantage come in?
As soon as we're.
The 21st or so.
Soon as we're ready.
Should we, so my question to the board is should we close the 15th and 16th? Which is a Thursday and Friday? And then Monday, Tuesday? Possibly Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday.
I, I would hope we'd be.
Uh, the 21st, 22nd, 23rd, where, when they would do their containment.
That we should close? While they do the containment?
I don't.
No, no, it wasn't.
Okay, I'm misunderstanding what you're saying, just putting it up. So do you think for us closing the 15th, 16th and 19th and 20th? We could get, because we, we need time to get the computers up here and everything online before town clerk tax collector actually opens and starts collecting money for taxes and things. That has to happen. So do you think the 19th and 20th will give you enough time to?
Well, so my worry is really with the fiber, uh, because of the way it has to be, uh, cut and spliced, if you will. You know, there's, there's opportunities for problems with that. It's either going to work or it's not going to work.
Yeah.
So, um, so I would almost, uh, prefer to have them, maybe I will have them routed up here and then route down temporarily, um, you know, a cable back down to our rack until we're ready to unplug up here, bring the rack up and plug in up here. So, um, so I'll look at that tomorrow, but it, it's, uh, it, you know, I'd like to say it's going to happen in an evening. Uh, it's probably not likely and people are going to have to be responsible for, um, you know, unplugging their things, you know, moving some of their things, you know, their, their, um, you know, their label printers, um, you know, the lighter things, their keyboard, mouse, maybe their monitor, um, you know, it depends on what it is, as long as it's not too heavy. Uh, otherwise the movers can bring those things up and, um, you know, because otherwise it's going to take a lot longer to get it done. So.
So I'm more concerned with putting it out on the board. For, you know, 15th, 16th, and then all of a sudden we change our mind and say, oh, we really should be the 19th and 20th. Well, let's make the decision. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think it's good to try to figure this out, but you're going to have to be a little flexible because it, I, I have heard confirmation that the guy still has to come in and say, and look at everything and say, yes, we can do it on this day. We can move it out. It's only tentative. So I think we're building everything on the idea that they're going to go on those two days. And I don't know that yet.
Right.
So.
So we can say that, that when they, when you get a permanent, you know, when you get a fixed, um, date, that we'll close the office the day before, give them a day and a half bef- before so that they can pack up their office. And then we'll continue with that level and then take the two days after that so that Tim can get the IT portion up here.
I think it's all kind of static as like Jeannie was saying, you know, there's,
Yep.
This, you can't come up with the exact answer. And the thing is, is whatever you need for time.
Right.
Right.
I think, I was just going to suggest that I think you have to be prepared for three to four days and, uh, and allow Jeannie and me to, because these vendors are all trying to work us in and, and work with us. But, you know, things may change, so.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't want to feel comfortable choosing a date right now. I'd leave it up to you folks because there's.
Okay.
A lot of moving parts.
All right, so the message, message board and town hall, hall closing, we're leaving it up to you two. Sound good? All right. Next on our list that we have, uh, what do you need us to make a decision for?
Sign the contract tonight. You're prepared to do that? Why are they not doing the bathrooms? Cause they're solid.
They have hard ceilings.
Even the, uh, one along this hallway downstairs.
So what they're going to do is above that hard ceiling, there is, uh, tin, but they're going to seal it off, um, because there's a, a very small sort of, uh, he described, you'd almost have to take down the hard ceiling to get to the, um, to the tin and lath and plaster. So it's already sealed in there. So what they're going to do is seal it up from the wall.
So I mean, it's all connected. The lathing, the plaster and all that theoretically is all connected. So over that bathroom, if they remove it from the hallway, what's going to hold what's left above that hard ceiling in place? Or do we not have to worry about it because there's a hard ceiling falling? I'm not so much concerned that there's, you know, lead paint on that tin. I'm more concerned of the possibility of it falling. I think that when they get in there, it, it's just one of those situations when they get in there, they're going to, they may have to say, we're going to have to do it a little differently. Based on what they looked at and what they saw, that's what they're recommending.
I would say that the border around what they cut and what they leave, that they should secure that with like strapping or something like that. So that it's not just like cut. Cause that's what happened down here is they just left it.
And it fell.
Going. So as long as they secure it around like that, they're leaving this much. And the bathrooms under here, they put strapping or secure this border. It's not going to come out.
You know, who knows what the walls surrounding that bathroom do? They probably don't go all the way up either. I don't know.
So the, the other things besides. The other things besides that agreement, um, would be, uh, the temporary power. And also the, uh, changing of the smoke detectors to heat detectors and removing the, removing the cameras from the ceilings, uh, and other devices. Yeah, you have it in front of you.
But I just have, um, the Enviro contract.
I left you a memo one earlier.
I thought that was just the proposal. I make a motion that we sign the Enviro advantage contract to the work downstairs. It's a, that's a sign. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Could we have the insurance that they'll make certain that?
We get the tunnel?
That bathroom, I mean, that's a big bathroom.
Oh, okay.
That that ceiling is.
That he.
Secure.
That he does the securing of it. Do you get that? Okay.
Not in jeopardy of falling anytime ever.
All right. And this is, uh.
But he didn't know anything about it or tunnel though.
No.
The fellow didn't know anything about that.
They wanted Kevin to do that.
We're going to ask them to do that.
Gordon, tell them about choosing on the way it has to be done.
Do you need a decision on Carter? I don't know why we, we need to have it done. So why?
Yes, you have to. Uh, and then in fact, one thing needs to be added to it, which is, uh, this powered the fire alarm, but it didn't empower the, uh, security system. So if you're going to have the panic buttons active up here, you're going to need to have that powered too. So, um, I think, uh, I think it's, it's adjacent to where he's wiring in the, um, wiring in the, uh, fire panel. So, um, I think it's just one, something that has to be mentioned to him that we also need that. The one in the stairwell.
Yes, that, that just has a wire that goes there to a 12 volt transformer. So they could, Mango could put in a 50 foot cable and plug it in anywhere in the building. Down like down the basement.
Okay.
You know, if they have a.
Well, the basement will be, basement will be off, but, uh, the, this, uh, temporary power is going to, there's going to be a panel. The, the basement steps are going to be sealed off. The panel's going to be brought up through the boiler room, you know, wired up and to the, a temporary panel in the, the, uh, first landing in the basement steps. And then, uh, in that, uh, panel there, there's a breaker for the, um, for the fire, um, fire, uh, panel. So they're going to wire that into the temporary panel. And I figured he could probably wire something to the, what's that?
Probably using an outlet.
An outlet and then they can just plug in the, the security system there. But, um, it's just something I got to make sure that we add, uh, that he knows about because he, uh, that, he wasn't aware of that earlier. Then the other item, uh, as I mentioned, is the Mango proposal. Did you not have this, Pat? Did you need one?
I do have Mango, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right.
I didn't realize it was a contract.
Given the time that we had, um, it's, it's similar to JP Carter's. So it's just getting approval for both.
Wow. Mango's more expensive than the all the work Carter's doing. And then some. Make a motion that we approve JP Carter for the, uh, removal and turning on, turning off the electric, whatever's necessary in town hall for the project.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you'll still have another one for Carter for the lighting.
Yeah, for the lighting, right.
$9200. Still have to do that tonight.
Make a motion for Mango Security Systems. To remove and reinstall the fire alarm and the heats on the ceiling tiles in the first floor of the town hall and the network video cameras, uh, during this project, town hall project. Oh, uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstate.
Really?
Any second portion of that? Video recorder? Relocated. Fire advantage said everything had to be.
Well, we just voted on anything on the sheet.
Okay.
So, um, that, that is to include what's on this invoice, the proposal of relocating the network video recorder head end. Okay. Just so everybody knows for clarification. All right. And then there's another for lighting. Do you have that lighting?
Uh, I don't have that. We can bring it up the next meeting. It's 9280 for the lighting. You don't have to do that tonight.
Okay. All right. Did we take care of? All right, did we take care of most of their concerns? I mean, Kim is asking if this counter, I don't know if she needs one, if there's a large table. Message board, we need to get it out on alert Tilton in Facebook and the website, along with whatever way, other ways we can promote it. Uh, the noise, there's nothing we could do about the noise.
I guess thing was, uh, hot water.
Uh, hot water.
There hasn't been hot water in that bathroom for over 20 years.
Can we designate this as no public ba- restroom? It's just for employees only?
Yeah.
We let public use that bathroom. At planning board meetings, we send people up there.
Well, I'm just thinking during the project.
Send them up there.
Good.
So why would we want the public to use the bathroom just cause it's no hot water? I mean, they use outhouses. The public uses outhouses.
But people sometimes come off the street just to use the bathroom downstairs, so.
So we could put a sign downstairs that says, what, no public bathrooms?
But I'm kind of thinking that. I mean, if people are up here and they're doing business with the town and they say, oh, I gotta go to the bathroom, I have a problem with that. But we do have a lot of people come off the street just to use the bathrooms downstairs.
Really?
Yeah, we do.
Delivery drivers.
Yeah.
Post office people.
You know, just put, put a sign due to construction.
Mm-hmm. Sorry for the inconvenience due to construction.
During construction, there are no public bathrooms.
Right. During construction. Yeah, okay.
Makes sense.
That's good. All right, and then, um.
Not for being an issue.
I would put hand sanitizer up there.
Sanitizer soap.
I put hand sanitizer up there for people who are really, I mean, people are still concerned about COVID. I still get calls about COVID.
All right, we need to get hand sanitizer up there.
Make sure that we, um, post the weight limit or whatever on the elevator and that everybody's aware of it.
Well, the elevator won't.
Any moving of file cabinets, right?
Well, we just said the file cabinets are going downstairs.
No file cabinets coming up?
Well, none.
Okay.
We kind of figured out.
Any other materials or anything, just make sure.
We, we're, what are we doing with the supervisor, the checklist and the trustee of the trust funds? Can they go to, to Public Works? I don't think they're gonna fit in there with the laterals that we need to have for, uh.
So, we should just have in that elevator any rate, um, something that says, I don't, it must say it.
It does say.
It has a rate, it has a rating.
Okay.
It does say.
That's all that.
Yeah, I think it's 750.
Seven something, yeah.
Yep.
I think the trustees and supervisors, but, so, but here's my other question, the supervisors typically work after hours sometimes on their files.
Trustees cabinet is very small, very light. There's not a lot.
The supervisors work after hours?
Sometimes.
So can we, uh, they're small enough, can they bring?
They only have one file cabinet, don't they?
Oh, they're small. No, the others are two, two, uh, yeah, they're, they're big ones, they're fif- 15 inches.
When are we gonna start digitizing our files?
Would we, um, put those files into file boxes so that if they need them, we can move them to any other area that's necessary?
Their files have to be secured.
Are they?
Oh, yeah, the supervisor, there's non-public information.
Couldn't we put the supervisors of the checklist files in your office?
Or you can do whatever you want up there.
Then that, they would have access to it?
I don't know who's been up there, but that's a mess. It is a mess, I'm sorry. Watching a complaint.
Okay.
There's a Christmas tree that's, it's like, everybody's just dope their stuff up there.
We'll take that up at another meeting, Adam Selectman.
So.
Oh, I'm gonna clean it up.
So do you think that the, that the trustee of the trust funds and the supervisor checklist, those three files can go into Catherine's? Okay?
There's a table and chairs up there they can work on as well.
Yep. That would be okay. I think that would be fine. Does, uh, administrative assistant need any of her files down there with her, the laterals? Okay.
Find out.
I'll find that out. Okay, so ADA compliance, we can't do anything about that, we have to say we're not A, we have to put a note on the door and say, if you're.
There's a bell down there that the sewer uses.
Right, if, you know, and Kim, Kim will go down and try to help them out in any way that they can. Land use, whatever, but we could probably put a table and chair in the hallway in this back. And they, they could just sit there and, and work whatever they need to. They can't do it in that hallway, but you could, there's room in this one.
Yeah, you, you can't set up a, you could have a temporary table maybe and get away with it, but you can't set up a, anything in staircase.
If there's still room enough for people to get out, fire would allow it.
They've cited us before on even just, um, and down there.
Nothing in that staircase.
Try.
Why wouldn't they have cited you for the front staircase over here?
What?
We got stuff in that, we got the, the sign for non-public and couple other things in the staircase there, net landing. Hmm. All right.
They don't watch this.
Yeah, okay. All right, I think we've addressed what we can, the others we can't address because we don't have any way to correct it. I don't quite understand what Kim was saying about setting protocols and managing the payments, uh, no stairs, no cash downstairs. That's up to her. She, she kind of sets that. That's not up to the Board of Selectmen, that's up to her that says, I can't accept cash, you know, if she has to go downstairs and do a transaction. That's with her, with, in her realm, not ours. All right? So, anything else we have to cover?
No, but it might be a good time for Kevin to look at that other front entryway to approve the steps. Because even as an egress coming out the door, that's kind of a narrow step. I've watched people go out that door and they kind of go, whoa!
Out here?
This one's full street or?
There. But if we, if we build that tunnel, we don't even have to open the door.
In our, in our normal world.
Oh, okay.
Going on, people have used that.
Right.
Door, that's door, they come down the stairs and go straight out and then almost fall on their face. I mean, it doesn't, it's not something he's gotta do now, I'm just saying, have him look at it.
Build something over it.
Improve it, maybe a wider.
Thing that.
Wider granite steps, better.
By chance, we can't build that tunnel, he might have to go and build a, uh, landing that's smooth with the floor and a couple steps to get.
Over the granite.
So that the doors could be open, he may have to build a little deck out there, which actually might be even easier than
The tunnel.
Tunnel.
I'd ask him to look at it.
Yep. I would do that.
So that, when you come down the stairs.
Very heavy.
Those doors open up, so where they're opening up, have a landing there that's built like a deck with steps going to it that's wide. Temporary on the sidewalk.
That doesn't take away the enormity and heaviness of that door when you open it. Some people are not gonna be able to open it. They can push, I don't know, they can't push the bu- buzzer because it's inside, you gotta come in first. All right, to circle back, the personnel files are going into the locked room downstairs. Did we already discuss that? Our personnel files.
What locked room?
Welfare.
Oh.
They're locked cabinets, right?
They're locked cabinets and then there are locked rooms, the locked room. So Kim and the two personnel files are going in there, correct?
Sounds good.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
And then if, uh, the administrative assistant needs the laterals, we'll ship those down to PD, uh, P, Public Works, I mean. Okay. All right, so we need to get with Kevin and let him know what personnel is going down there. We need to make sure that all of this other stuff is going on and if we need to, we'll get together again. Do we have any other questions to come before us?
I have some questions on the unanticipated project work availability of funds. B, committed ARPA projects as yet incomplete. That mean those funds are available or not? Committed is throwing me off.
So, so those were projects that the Board of Selectmen had voted to do and that were started, but have not yet been completed.
One of those projects, says crosswalk.
Crosswalk is the one from Winter Street over to Riverfront Park. The survey work has been done. The, the plans, um, the engineering plans have.
Is showing up on there.
I can mute them.
So sidewalk survey, that's been done, that money's been spent?
No, that's the one you didn't sign off on.
Okay, so this money is available?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm saying, committed sounded like.
Well, the crosswalk committed only in that the project is partially started and you, you've spent some money, but you have $44,000 left.
Okay.
Well, and I wasn't aware that, uh, the board had rescinded, um, uh, you know, any of those projects, so.
No, it's okay.
They're still in the same.
You do now.
This, uh, the crosswalk.
Okay.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt you. You all done?
I was gonna move on to the next one, so if you wanna talk about crosswalks.
The crosswalk, um, you're talking about where the land, where the, um, lamp posts are, Jeannie?
No.
No, this is Winter's.
Winter to.
It's the one that we had discussed and we had talked about, and we were out with the state so that it can provide better access to Riverfront Park from the Winter Street.
Okay.
Cause street across there.
Correct, yeah, with it, that was the one with.
$44,000 was for the light.
The flash, the flashing lights, the LED flashing lights.
Are they solar?
No.
Do you know that they have solar flashing crosswalk lights? Because I talked with Chief Cormier about that before I left for, um, in front of Tilton House of Pizza. Because that's another area that's pretty dark. Um, they're pretty inexpensive.
These are the ones that were recommended by NHDOT that had to go in there.
Yeah, because the state had, the state has certain ones, cause it's their road, that they had certain ones that were, would be approved.
Okay, Main Street is their road too, but when I talked to, I don't know, anyone I talked to, they were okay with those solar flashing lights. I remember New Hampshire DOT, what they suggested for crossing from, um, yeah, Salmon Run for the River Trail, or the Wild Trail, what is it called? The trail. And, um, notice that isn't there. And it was allowed to continue, so I'm just saying. But that, that's off on another tangent. Um, D, new infrastructure, I'm assuming that's capital reserve fund.
Right.
What is new infrastructure?
That's the new capital reserve fund that was approved at town meeting and funded with $20,000.
But what?
It's for building infrastructure, buildings, roofs.
Whatever.
Major.
Okay.
Components.
Yep, that's building maintenance, basically.
Removal tin ceilings.
Major, major building issues.
More than just.
All right, thank you, proposals made.
May I?
Clarification.
So, just one clarification for me, so I can update our records. So has the board rescinded either one of those or both of those ARPA projects?
Yes, we, last week voted, no more spending on projects.
So those, uh, those monies were not raised and appropriated with, uh, taxpayer money?
On hold.
So those are on hold, but they're not rescinded, they're just on hold?
Right.
In case we need the money for this project or on hold.
Effectively, they are on hold because there's no activity as far as I'm, as I'm aware, so.
We agreed to, we didn't do specifics, well, you're gonna not do this one and not do that one, we didn't rescind the project, we're, we're putting everything on hold.
I'll just leave them in a committed status, but a hold, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Limbo.
Limbo. All right.
Project limbo.
Um, Jeannie and Tim, do you have any other questions that we need to answer or make a decision on for this project? No?
Only that, uh, there may be, you know, things that come up, um, boxes that may need to be purchased that are gonna be, I can't imagine this can be more than $1,500, but there may be some things that come up and, um, you know, what's that?
Painting.
Or the.
We already told them we wanted it painted, we already agreed.
But in, but in terms of between now and being up and running upstairs, I'm just thinking there could be some expenses that, um, that may not preclude getting three bids and having a meeting and approving those three bids. I don't know what that would be, but I'm just saying that, given the compressed timeframe you're looking at, um, you know, that's, that could be a, that could be a potential stumbling block.
Yep. We're good with that?
Understood.
Understood.
What would Joe say? He was here.
What would Joe say? I hate lawyers?
No. So we're okay with if they need to spend that money, that's what I'm understanding.
On this project?
On this project, yes, whatever, whatever it takes. The other thing is the painting, you asked about the painting that they would, they haven't looked at that yet because they're uh, obviously paying attention to what this is.
Probably be one additional that we're gonna spend something on.
The painting, correct.
And paint's not cheap anymore.
If you know of any contractors that they can get bids on, email Jeannie. I, I had a couple I emailed, but that's it. All right, any new business to come before us in an open meeting? That's it. Okay, what would Joe say?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.